I shall call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone. We shall start out tonight's meeting with roll call. So as soon as Carolina gets back, I'll ask her to do a roll call for us.
Okay, council member Carrills?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Collexon? Mayor Waller.
Yes. First of all, welcome everybody. Man, is it refreshing to see a packed house. You should all pat yourself on the back because I think this is the largest crowd we've ever had at a council meeting as long as I've been here.
I would say not ever, but no, a long time.
Once again, we shall start with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This particular quote I picked out comes from William Arthur Ward. If you're not familiar with Mr. Ward, he is an American motivational writer. Some of his work has been published in Reader's Digest. Feeling gratitude and not expressing it is like wrapping a present and not giving it. Words from Arthur, okay. We shall move on to approval of tonight's agenda, but before I, we get to that point, I have for the council, a couple of items I'd like to add on the agenda. Under line item B, under Citizens Comments, I'm going to have you add Friends of Eastside Park presentation. We're going to be hearing from the Next Gen group at the Citizens Comments. First up there and then the Friends will go second. Also, when you go all the way down to Mayor and City Council, section of the agenda and item B, I would like to add, set a date for a public hearing on site location for the Destination Park project. We will deal with that at that point. So we do have a public hearing tonight and just so everybody knows, we'll just lay down a few ground rules of how tonight is gonna go. We do have a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing regarding the cannabis ordinance. And then if there's anybody here right now that is here to speak to that ordinance, just raise your hand and let me know. I'm assuming most of you are here for the park, but if there's anybody here for the, that wants to address the council, just let me know and I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to come up to the mic. And this goes really for anybody that, as we go through the Gen 2 group and the Friends. What I'm going to ask for tonight with the Friends of Eastside Park, I know you've formed a group. I'd love to hear from every one of you, but what I'm going to ask is that we have a spokesperson for the group come up and I've already talked, I believe, one or two of you that are willing to do that. So just come up to the mic, introduce yourself, name an address, that kind of thing, tell, and then just state your business and then you can have add it. So. Yes, I was getting to that. I just, we had the two items that we added to the agenda. I was just going to ask the council if there was any other additions or corrections we have, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the agenda with the additions.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda with the added items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Now I will open the public hearing. It's the second reading of ordinance number 127. It's an ordinance of the city of Morris to regulate cannabis and businesses. How public hearings work, just so everybody understands it, all ordinances, they need to be introduced, which is a first reading. And tonight, we've already introduced it at one of our previous meetings, so tonight is our second reading. And we will adopt that ordinance tonight after some discussion perhaps. So I opened the public hearing and they call these things public hearings for a reason. The city council, just to remind them, during the public hearing portion of the meeting, the city council doesn't have an opportunity to speak. We get to listen. That's why they call these things public hearings, so we get to listen. So now is the opportunity, if anybody would like to address the ordinance regarding cannabis regulation, now is your time. Look at all the park people. Nobody cares about cannabis, but I guess they care about parks, alright. Okay, with that being said, I shall close the public hearing and I will bring it back to the council for any further discussion. And we can entertain a motion to approve. As most people know here, we, as a city, have delegated our regulation of cannabis to the county. So the obligation at our end, at the city level, is somewhat removed, but we do have to set an ordinance in cannabis here. Would you like to speak to that at all? Rebecca, maybe you could tell us something.
Yeah, so what this, what this ordinance does, it is, it delegates our authority to the county to register businesses. And then it basically says what businesses can go in what zones. So those, those are what the Planning Commission deemed these different areas can have these different businesses in them. And that's what our ordinance is.
And distances from schools, treatment facilities, daycares. Just it regulates how far it has to be away from anything with youth or children in the vicinity.
It's probably pretty hard for you to get up to the mic, I guess if you want to stand, you have a question, sir?
Are the mics on?
While you, the mic, see, our meetings are all taped and your voice may or may not get picked up from back there. That's why I typically ask people to come up to the mic, but if you want to just throw out a question from there, that's fine, we have quite a packed house.
The mics are not a PA system for this room, the mics are recording for the televised access channel. So this is for the recording to be put on the access channel is what our PA system does.
I just hope the speakers enunciate and speak loud enough so everybody can hear it.
Right. Our meetings are typically available, what, tomorrow?
Yeah.
After, so.
Well, with the holidays, Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Yeah.
Would there be any discussion from the council regarding this ordinance? I know we've tabled it quite a bit already.
I will move approval of the ordinance number 127, an ordinance of the city of Morris to regulate cannabis businesses.
I'll second.
Okay.
And this being the second reading.
This adopts that ordinance, so after we get done taking a vote here, it will be official. Okay, we have a first and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance number 127, an ordinance of the city of Morris to regulate cannabis businesses. I think what I'll do is ask for a roll call vote on that, Carolina.
Council member Miller?
Yes.
Carrills?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Collexon? Mayor Waller.
Yes. Okay, now we get to the fun stuff. This is Citizens Comments, portion of our meeting. And like I had alluded to earlier, next, our first up is our Next Gen group. But before I turn it over to them, I would like to recognize the Gen 2 group and I guess you're, most of you are already standing, but just so everybody in the audience knows who these hard chargers are. Carly Van Huff, maybe raise your hand. Zach Crails. Kirsten Doherty. Brad Dolan. Emma Wenty. And Denon Doherty. You know, I just do have to say, a couple of months ago, we had the privilege of listening to Kirby Sales and Jared Astmas. They approached the council, had a project in mind. They're looking at trying to build a sports complex, indoor sports complex for their baseball. Association is kind of pushing this and so we have a young group of people there looking at doing a project. And now we have another group of young people in our community that's looking to do another group that's going to benefit our community. So really, it's, it's pretty exciting stuff when you sit back and think about that. So that being said, I will turn it over to you guys.
Awesome. Do we need a mic? Do we need that to bring?
As long as everybody here can hear you, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
Just speak good and loud. You're Emma, right?
Yes, I'm Emma.
Okay, great.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not much taller than the podium, so hopefully everyone can see me here. Alrighty, well, good evening and thank you for everyone joining us tonight. We're excited to share our vision for the Eastside Park project. A space that brings community together, fosters connection, and enhances opportunities for all. Our theme, reimagine, renew, and reconnect, captures the heart of this project. This initiative isn't just about building a playground. It's about creating a central hub where everyone, regardless of their ability, feels welcomed and valued. So before we get into the details of the project, I want to introduce our team behind. Mayor Waller did already introduce us, but our team includes Carly Van Toch, Zach Crails, Kirsten Doherty, Brad Dolan, myself, Emma Wenty, and Denon Doherty. Our Next Gen team is leading this effort with our mission of Next Gen as a whole, our group altogether, is to enhance the culture of opportunity at our company. We aim to create meaningful community connections by equipping people with chances for growth and engagement. This project is the perfect example of our mission and it blends personal development as well as community impact. So we all work for Superior Westmore and that's where this kind of idea started. So at our company, giving back is the core of who we are as a company. This project is way more than building just a park. We think about it as demonstrating our commitment to the community by enhancing relationships and investing in Morris, a place where we all were born and raised and where we now call home. We are fostering a place for future generations and where those future generations will be proud to call home. So I want to talk about objectives. So our primary goal for tonight is to inform the council and the community about our vision for Eastside Park. We would like to acknowledge that up until two weeks ago, we have not communicated this to council or community members. Our plan, we felt, had to be strong before we came to, came to council for a formal presentation. We wanted to make sure that we had the nuts and bolts of our proposal before presenting. It is our goal that we leave this meeting tonight so that everyone understands our vision. And secondly, we want to secure approval to move forward with the vendor that we have requested from the park board, which is LSI. Ultimately, this project is about building something that reflects the needs and values of Morris as a whole. So what is our why and why did we choose this? What is our community need? It's something that we kept coming back to and something that our CEO, Bob Dominic, posed to us back in July. And we came back to a space that's inclusive, accessible, and vibrant. A place where kids of all abilities play together and families can gather. Eastside Park can become more, can become a destination for visitors, driving local business, and outside individuals into town. But more than that, this project is a cause our entire community can rally behind. A central and vibrant hub for our community to come together. It also attracts new people to come to town, being outside from our community and coming in to see all that Morris has to offer, and also keeping people in town. We're all young families and right now, we head out of town and go to these destination playgrounds that our kids get so excited about. And we spend an hour, two hours at this park. We head into town and, you know, spend our dollars there. And so we want Morris to be that place that people come to and spend their dollars here. So I want you to think about, imagine a place where laughter echoes, friendships are formed, and every member of our community, young, old, and ability, feels welcomed. No matter, a place where parents can relax with their children, where they can, the kids can explore freely with, with learning abilities, music, and play. A place that brings us together, not just as neighbors, but as family, celebrating milestones, hosting events, and creating memories of a lifetime. And that's our vision for the Eastside Park project. So what does this entail? This project is designed with the future of Morris in mind. It includes a 23,000 square foot playground, a 60 by 100 parking lot, and a new shelter or pavilion, updated bathrooms, and a new ban shelf, or updated ban shelf, I should say. The park will be developed in three phases. Phase one will be, let me make sure I'm presenting correctly, the 23,000 square foot playground and a parking lot. That is phase one of the project. That would be about $2 million. Phase two would include updated or new bathrooms and a new shelter or pavilion. We guess that would be about $500,000. Phase three would be updating the ban shelf, making sure that we still have a common space for people to gather and host events, and just give it a little bit of a facelift. So those are the phases we're looking at. So jumping into Eastside Park and digging more into our goals, this isn't just a project for the community, it's a project for the communities, a project by the community. Eastside Park will be funded, built, and cherished by the people of Morris. It will be funded through donations from local businesses and community members. It will be built with the coordination of Westmore and Superior. So we will essentially be the GM of the project. The result will be a park that reflects the heart and values of our town, one that we can all take pride in. So how did we get here? In July, it was brought to us as a Next Gen group of this, some idea of what is something that we can do in our community and go above and beyond. In August, we came up with the idea of a destination playground. In September, we started to look at vendors. We had no idea what we were doing and so we just kind of started looking. In October, we got park designs back. Excuse me, now in December, we hope to have a designs or a vendor selection. So what is our timeline moving forward? Once we have the vendor selection and preliminary design done, we hope to have that done by tonight. In 2025, we want to secure donors and do all the fundraising. We truly believe we're going to need that full year to do all of the funding, just because it is such a large scale event. Fundraising $2 million. And we hope to have this completed by summer of 2026 so that kids can enjoy the play all summer long. So I'm going to hand it over.
Hi, everybody, thank you for coming. My name is Brad Dolan. I get to talk about something a little bit more on the fun side, is the design. And I'm going to start that by welcoming Mark Hendrickson up from LSI. He is their VP of Operations and he's just going to inform everybody a little bit of what LSI offers and the type of company that they are.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, so Mark Hendrickson, you know, it's Mark Hendrickson, most of the time around here, it's Butch Hendrickson or Al Hendrickson's son or Hank's brother or whatever the case might be. So, but I've, I was born and raised here. We moved here in 1966, my family did. And so I'm the youngest of five people. Married my high school sweetheart, Dave and Bernie Wenty's daughter, so, and she's the oldest of three. My, Bernie is still here and my mom is still here as well. So, so I've got a definite interest, I heard about the park and then obviously we're in the business. And so, wow, it's pretty exciting. So to be kind of touch base to home and what happens around Morris, Minnesota, pretty excited about that, so. The playground itself, you know, we talked about a community playground and dry and inclusive. Those are, those destination type playgrounds, right? It's fantastic, right? So you have not only a local community, but you're drawing from others around, so. I've been at Landscape Structures for 10 years and I've heard hundreds of stories of how things transform communities, what they do, right, for just kids with all abilities and really making a community event, pulling people from other areas to really grow the community. So Landscape Structures, 1971, so we're 53 years old. I've been there 10 years, I'm the VP of Operations. We have 800 people in Delano. We have just over 700,000 square feet of space in Delano, Minnesota. And so we have five different corporate objectives. Perfect shipment is one of those and that perfect shipment is quality and on-time delivery. So commitment to our customer and so I happen to be the executive sponsor of that quality and delivery, so. Things that rise up in quality and delivery and how we're performing as an organization is my responsibility to the organization. So I pay a lot of attention to quality efforts and shipping and those kind of things. And just the design process, right, I have the ability to oversee things and check in on and make sure. And so if we're so lucky to be the vendor of choice, you will have my personal commitment as a touch base into Morris, but also just, you know, that's my role in the company as well, but to make sure that I will know when that order is coming through our factory and to make sure that it gets all the perfect touches that it needs to be special for Morris, Minnesota.
Thanks, Mark.
Super, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Before we move to the design, I was just going to touch on a little bit more about that relationship that we've built with LSI the last couple months, month or so. We actually reached out to LSI before we put together that connection with Mark and once we put that together too, that was just, it's all a part of the story that this will end up being when this park is done and finished. So we're building and have built a great relationship with LSI and look forward to continuing that. Next, we have a fly-through video of the latest design that we've gotten from LSI. It's pretty cool to look through, so.
Where's the music, Carly?
I know.
Come on.
Sorry, it was near to anyone there.
There we go, alright.
There we go.
Looks like kind of an agricultural theme there, I can see. Have you worked on that?
Yeah.
So there's our fly-through. We just got that last week, I believe, so we're pretty excited to see that. Even as you go through the design process, it's hard to know all those little tiny pieces that are in there that will really make this playground stand out. As Mayor Waller's pointed out, one of the biggest things about this playground that we feel is going to set it apart from other ones is that theme, that agricultural theme that Morris really holds true in their roots is that agricultural base. So a couple of things to highlight, there's a balance theme, that's a carrot. There's a big barn in the middle, there's a tractor that's in our two to five-year-old playground area. And you'll just see that there's, that farm theme continues throughout the whole playground. And that's one of the things that set LSI apart for us, was them being able to deliver that theme. And as we get into the fundraising process, we feel like that will be a benefit to us as well. That they're not just donating to a playground that you might find in St. Cloud or if you're on vacation somewhere. This playground will be unique to Morris. You're not going to see this when you're on vacation anywhere else. This is one of a kind in Morris, Minnesota. Second thing I'm going to touch on is the quality. So a big driving factor for us with LSI as well was our comfort with knowing that they'll deliver a high-quality product. They, we've learned as working through them, working with them, and while we were working with other vendors, that LSI is going to deliver a high-quality product and back it up for the life of this playground in Morris. As someone who had never been designing playgrounds before, I'll point out some stuff that you might not take away just from watching the fly-through. So the entire base level of the playground is what we call horded place. So that makes it fully accessible for children that require accommodations such as a wheelchair. It's pretty similar to like a tennis court type of material. Roll on it with your wheelchair, running across it. There's a playground similar to this in Wilmer where they have the same thing and that's the first thing you notice when you walk out there is it's not wood chips that are getting in your shoe. It's not pebbles that are getting kicked all around. It's a sturdy base that makes it very accessible for everybody. Everybody and anybody as well. So the playground is broken up into two main sections. You have your older kid playground area on this side, that's where the barn is located. A big highlight of this is all of those ramps make nearly every level of this playground accessible. Accessibility has been such a huge thing for us as we've designed this playground and worked with our designers. A playground that can be used by everybody in our community is a big, big, big selling point for us. We've worked with local connections to make sure that this playground is authentically accessible. It's not a playground that you'll go to with a child that requires accommodations and they're not able to actually play on the stuff that's advertised that they can. We've done everything we can, done all the research we can and use those local connections to make sure that this is authentically accessible. And when we're all said and done, we believe it'll be the most accessible playground in the state. So this, this is our older kid area. A big, nice part of this is the tall barn. We believe that will catch people's eyes as they're driving by. That top, that tall silo as well is a big highlight of the playground design. You'll notice throughout, there are specific equipment pieces that are designed to be specifically accessible, such as a merry-go-round that can be accessed on wheelchair. That red piece to the left of the barn is like a rocker that can be accessed by a child in a wheelchair. So all those pieces just make it so unique and so accessible. Here's a better view of the barn and the tower. A very cool part about this specific tower is it's actually accessible as well. There's no steps, it's a climb up to the top, so partially. So partially accessible. And this will be the main focus of our park as we drive by. This is looking over at the younger kid area. So these play mounds are a really cool aspect, in my personal opinion. They're land structures. They're also covered in that same horded place material, so they're safe. And it's just a cool, unique part of our playground that will set it apart. Touching on that safety aspect, a big thing about this playground, compared to most that you might go to, will be the fencing around it. We're aware of Seventh Street there on East Side Park or any other locations, that safety is a big concern. And that fence all the way around the park, one entrance location. For parents, all of us being parents, it just, it sets your mind at ease when you enter that playground. Knowing where your kids are, being able to keep an eye on them and knowing that they're inside that fenced-in area. We have a bunch of swings, a bunch of accessible swings, both partially accessible and full and partial transfer swings. We have a bunny swing at the far left there where a parent could ride with their child at the same time. A lot of feedback we got when we were working on this was more swings, the better. Now we'll touch on locations.
So with a park of this caliber, we've been working a lot with Russ.
You're going to need, I'm sorry, you're going to need to be louder because it turns out that the group who rent at the Space Next Door have come. They're quite excited too. So if you could speak up a little, that would help us all. Thank you.
Noted. With a park of this caliber, we've really been working with Becca and Russ with the city for months now, trying to find an area in town that could even fit this thing. So we've been working with them for maybe three months now. And the two places we narrowed it down after the last park board meeting were East Side Park and Pommetier Park. So here's a couple topics that we used to compare the two, first being accessibility and visibility, safety and security, space and environmental impact, cost and infrastructure requirements, which is a big one, and we'll get to that in a little bit. And then support from the community and impact to local businesses, which we feel is very important. So with that, I will turn it over to Carly.
Alright, I'm going to start by talking about East Side Park. And please let me know if I'm not speaking loud enough. I'll shout, I drink enough water today. So I want to start by giving just a preview of what East Side Park would look like once this playground was placed in there. So the total square footage of East Side Park block is just shy of 92,000 square feet. So the playground we are proposing to add is 23,000 square feet. And with the 6,000 square foot parking lot, which will facilitate roughly 23 vehicles, two of those spaces being accessible spots. And then the 5,000 square feet of existing assets at East Side Park. And those are the van shell, the basketball court, and the existing shelter. That comes out to a remaining 57,800 square feet of green space where the grass and trees are still going to be preserved. There's going to be plenty of room to host other types of activities there. The welcome picnic that the university hosts should still have plenty of space. And there'll be plenty of room for kids to throw around a football, play soccer. The things that we see at East Side Park today would still be able to go on. That is still remaining 63% of East Side Park that will stay green space. So going into some of the pros, or sorry, some of the, yeah, some of the pros of East Side Park. It's centrally located, which means it's walkable for community members. And we feel like this is a major benefit because we feel like the local daycare centers will be able to use it, the school will be able to incorporate it into their curriculum, the summer Sizzle program in the summer will be able to use it. And our community members will be able to go to the park without having to find transportation or plan when they are able to load their children up in a vehicle and take them to an alternative location. Another huge factor, if you remember what Emma said of what our overarching goal of this project is, it is to support our local businesses. It is to help stimulate Morse's economy. And we feel like the closer we can be to Main Street, the more effective that goal will be. And that is why East Side Park, being right next to Main Street and right next to the local restaurants and businesses, is the best location in our mind. The existing infrastructure, like the van shell, also helps carry out our vision of creating that vibrant central hub of Morse, Minnesota. A place where people can come and listen to music in the park and their children can play in the playground. And maybe someday the farmer's market on a Thursday night is also located there in conjunction. A spot where you can go and know that you're going to have meaningful community connections any night of the week because it's easy for people to get to. With its location on Seventh Street, we also feel like it provides high visibility that this amazing park is located in Morse, Minnesota. I think we would all consider Seventh Street a main vein of Morse. And so to have it there, when people are in town visiting, you can almost guarantee they're going to drive by that playground and they're going to want to stop and check it out. Okay. Some cons that we came up with with East Side Park is it is a residential area, which does raise concerns for noise and the level of activity that will happen at that location. Seventh Street is also a very busy street. And so it does pose a threat or cause safety concerns for children. However, we do really feel like we've overcome that with fully fencing in the playground and making it only accessible from one entering and exit point. Another con that we saw coming into this project was the limited parking. East Side Park, you can really only park on the road. And if you've ever been there on a night where there are a lot of families, it can be difficult to find a parking spot. But we do feel like the parking lot we're proposing to add would help eliminate that concern. So now we're going to look at Pommetier Park. When we went into evaluating this, we had started when we launched the project, considering East Side Park and Pommetier Park. And then with the help from Russ and Becca, we really started looking seriously into these two locations. And two weeks ago, we came to the park board meeting and listened to citizens' concerns. We went and we put numbers and pros and cons towards Pommetier Park. And here's what we came up with. At first, we thought it would be great to place this park right next to the splash pad. It's close to the parking lot, it's close to the bathrooms, and it helps tie in all of the other recreational activities out there. But the issue with this idea is all of the splash pad plumbing and water and septic tanks are located in that area. And that is also where all of the electrical lines run. So it's just not feasible. We're not able to put it in this location. The alternative location that does have the capacity that we need is located, if you can vision, you drive through Pommetier Park, past the shelters, and towards the flower gardens. And on the left-hand side, you'll see the open space of trees running along the river. This location has ample amount of room, there's no doubt about it. But the location is a half a mile away from the entrance to the park and over a mile away from the road on the other side. In addition, the bathrooms and parking lot are over 800 feet away from this location, which means we would have to put up new bathrooms and a parking lot as part of phase one to even make this possible. The plumbing is not built to be able to just add on bathrooms. So working with Russ with Cox, we would have to put in a brand-new mound system out there, which is not a cheap project. And then add bathrooms in a parking lot and a shelter in that location. And we feel like the estimated cost of that would be right around $750,000. And also with talking with Russ, that road is not paved once you leave the park and you go towards the flower gardens. And it is very difficult for the city to maintain that road. I don't know if you've ever grabbed ice cream and went for a drive. It's very bumpy going down that road. And so the city feels like that would need to be paved, which would have an estimated cost of right around a million dollars to pave that 1.3 miles. Making Pommetier Park $1.75 million more than East Side Park. Another big thing I want to touch on is in order to facilitate the park in that location, we would have to remove Frisbee Golf, which is something that is utilized quite often by community members. And we are not trying to subtract amenities and activities in Morse, Minnesota. And because of its proximity to the river, we would need DNR approval to even place a park in this location. Some pros of Pommetier Park. It's non-residential, which means it minimizes residence disturbances. Its proximity to the existing splash pad does add to the recreational value. And there could be potential less car traffic through the campground than what we would see on Seventh Street. You could see that as a pro or a con. Some cons we've came up with. It's very dangerous to place a playground next to a river and it poses some serious safety concerns for children. It's located in a campground, which means we don't always know who is camping out at that campground, which poses a stranger safety issue. The bugs out at Pommetier Park are hungry. And so the city would have to be committed to spraying and maintaining the mosquitoes at East Side Park. There are more trees in that area that we are proposing the park goes than what are at East Side Park, almost double. Meaning we would have to cut down two times the amount of trees in that area. It's less visible, it's not easily accessible, and driving is required for our community to be able to get to that park. You're crossing a busy highway, children crossing a highway to get to it. It's farther from Main Street and local businesses, which going back to our goal, right? Our goal is to support our local businesses and create a central hub that's accessible for all. Road improvement projects and the higher cost of water and sewer installations will mean that our budget to even get started is almost double. Our group has done a lot of research the last couple weeks and we've reached out to local businesses. And each local business that we've heard from has said that they would prefer the playground be at East Side Park. They see how it would directly affect them as a business. We've also reached out to some of our key donors and they feel like East Side Park is the vision for this site. And for that, our group is concerned that we will not be able to fundraise the additional money required to place this park at Pommetier. Brad Dolan has also done a lot of research on grants out there for community development. And we feel like the location of Pommetier Park is too far away from our Main Street and economic district. We may be ruled out on some of those community development grants based on location. So I just threw a lot at you, but I want to give you just kind of a side-by-side recap of what we went through. East Side Park, it's walkable, it's central, it's accessible to most. Pommetier Park, driving is required to be able to get to the playground. The visibility, East Side Park is high traffic. It's located on one of our major roads of Morse, Minnesota. Meaning you can almost guarantee when people are visiting our community, they're going to know the park is there and they're going to stop. At Pommetier Park, many could come to Morse, Minnesota and miss out on the opportunity to see the hard work that our community has put into putting a park of this scale in our community. East Side Park requires fewer tree removals than what Pommetier Park requires. And then the community impact, it's closer to our local businesses, which means the people that invest in our community are going to see the returns of a park like this. If you put it out at Pommetier Park, the way our highways are set up in Morse, Minnesota, there is a very good chance that a lot of the visitors won't even make it into Morse. They'll hop back on the bypass and head home. The cost, East Side Park has a shelter. It has the van shell and it has functional bathrooms. While we realize we will need to put a shelter up after the park and the parking lot is built, we are able to get started right away with the existing infrastructure there. With Pommetier Park, we will need to invest in sewer, in water, in updating the road, which takes a $2 million project to a $4 million project. And ultimately, we feel like a park at East Side Park will be able to have more successful funding from our community members and our businesses and we'll be more likely to receive community development grants. With Pommetier, with the feedback we've received from local business owners and local donors, we do not feel like we'll be able to secure the $4 million to a project of this size. So what's next? Our goal as a next-gen committee is to seek park board recommendations for location at East Side Park at their next park board meeting. We'd like to host a formal public hearing on January 14th during the council meeting and then ultimately seek council vote on location on that January 14th council meeting as well. And at this time, we'll open it up to questions from the council.
The ability to retain any of the trees at either location, that's something that was brought up at some of our park board meetings. I sit on the park board, but we thought that it was very possible. And maybe, Mr. Hendrickson, you can answer this. With retaining some of the trees for shade in the area that's going to be paved over with this material, is that a possibility to leave some of the older trees that are going to provide some shade? I mean, all the pictures we saw, it's just wide open, the playground equipment and the surface that we're going to be putting down. But is there any way to retain some of the trees in there for shade?
Yeah, I'm not specifically very familiar with the good at East Side Park, but I don't know how many are actually involved in that. There are some compliance things, so you need some, you know, for play equipment, you need some certain space. So you'd have to have somebody specifically to look at that.
But if the ability is, we can work it in there possibly?
Again, there's specific compliance requirements. You have to have a clear distance away from a certain piece of equipment. And so given the space there, you need to take a closer look at that for sure. But there, it's just not a free-for-all you get to do, you don't want to do because there are some compliance things that are required as part of the putting the playground and certain equipment.
Thank you, just talking with...
Do you mind if we comment on that?
Sure. I also just want to throw in there that Public Works Director had felt that about 14 trees would need to be removed. I think it's some of the discussions we've had at the size that we talked about. But yeah, please add your input.
So I just want to talk about how LSI got to where they are with their design. So they came out and they measured so that they can start putting together proposals like this. And we gave them the measurements of the heritage trees at East Side Park that we know we are dedicated to keeping and we do not want to remove. And so this playground is within the perimeters of those heritage trees at East Side Park. And since we selected LSI as a vendor, they would be willing to come back out and exact measure each tree at East Side Park to help us determine which trees can stay, which trees really need to go. Because we have the flexibility, if you saw the playground, there's quite a bit of open space in our design. So if we need to shift something six feet one way because of trees right there, there's a possibility we can do that with knowing that there are going to have to be trees that come down.
We are committed to, or in, well, we, as in Becca and Russ, are committed to replanting trees that do need to come down.
To touch on your shade as well, that was a concern at the park board meeting that community members had. And since then, Brad has started looking into options. And there is a lot of grant money out there for the sun shades. And so that is something our group has added to the scope of the project is to apply for grants to get the sunscapes to be able to install to help with the sun and making it in all of that.
We're dealing with about a two-acre parcel at East Side Park.
We're dealing with about a two-acre parcel at Eastside Park. Has there been any consideration at all for Green River Park? Green River Park is a four-and-a-half acre parcel. Beck and I briefly visited about it, and you know, we had, you know, the idea that it gets a little bit wet at Green River is a concern, but you know, when you develop things, you could probably always add fill, and maybe we could work with that.
That's our backup to our stormwater, so that just, that one, that would not be, you know.
Can't.
Yeah, you know, that fills up when we get five inches of rain.
Yeah, that's right, that outruns-
Two feet of water in that whole area.
But that's located really where the pickleball courts are, because the drain is west.
Yeah, I think that would, yeah.
It goes, oh, that's right, it does go east. Does it go underneath then the soccer field?
Well, it comes back to the west, the drain catch basin, but all the water goes out to the Palmetiere River, but we can only dump so much. It has to be controlled or controlled release into the river. It can't just all go full steam ahead.
So building a, something like this or the town-
So that's been discussed with Public Works Russ at the park board meetings on an area that you want-
I just didn't know if there'd been any consideration-
No, they've looked at Wells Park, they've looked at Green River, you know, tried to do an open mind to look at all the different park facilities that we do have, and the bathroom needs and shelters and-
Okay, well, that answers my question, thank you.
I don't know if I have a question, but I'd just like to thank you guys for your hard work. And you know, it's just really great to see young people in our community want to step up and make a project. Go for the younger people. You know, I've had my kids are older and now it's grandkids. And so I lean towards the younger generation in this town, and we need to bring that to what does the younger generation need? You know, myself is an older generation. I, maybe I want certain things a certain way, but I really need to look at what does the younger generation need? What do we do to bring younger people to town, keep our town alive? It's not alive by what I want, I'm getting past that point. It's alive by what you guys want or what our younger generation does. We have a lot of great businesses in town, and we need housing, and we need young people to move to town to work these jobs and to keep Morse alive. So I commend you guys for taking on this project, and I just really appreciate the presentation that you brought forward to us. Thank you.
And to add, another location that we've talked about is the old school property. A lot of people said, well, just go up there, well, that does not belong to the city. The county is working on the potential of expanding more daycare pods to the, to me, it's south, but on the Fifth Street side of where the existing pods are. The city is working with the county and HRA on doing some potential housing, and we're extremely short on housing, so looking at doing some housing along Columbia Avenue from Seventh all the way up to Fifth Street, so. And then there again, there's no bathroom facilities, there's no shelter facilities, so. It's, the areas have been looked at, just for the public's information on some potentials that I've seen in some letters, some letters we've received that they don't want the park all paved over and blacktop. I think the blacktop will be the parking lot, the rest of it's going to be the surface that is friendly to play on, that's going to be, I think, a pretty decent-looking, maintenance-free. And with your plans to have some funding included with your fundraising to maintain the facilities for a number of years after it's built, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is still allowed to ask a question?
We're not into that phase.
Okay.
Pardon?
We're not into the public phase question of this, is it just the council at this moment?
No, this can't, I think at this point, here's what's going to happen. Where, for those of you who got here late, the only action that the city council is taking tonight is vendor selection, okay? And we, as you heard, if you were here, we did, we're going to set a date for a public hearing.
I didn't hear, I was in the bus.
Yeah, okay, you probably missed that part, but we are going to have, set a date for a public hearing. And at that public hearing, that will be time for really questions, site-location related questions. Obviously, there's a large number of you here tonight, and I respect everybody's time. And if that works, I hope everybody's comfortable with that, council. That's the way I'd like to approach it. And is there any other questions? I guess if you want to ask a question of the Gen 2 people right now, go ahead, that's fine, go ahead.
I just wanted to know, I just wanted to know when the park board meeting, I understood the park board meeting comes first before January 14th?
January 8th, I believe, right?
Yep.
And that's located here or where?
Mark, where do you want to have the park board meeting?
It can be here if we have a lot of visitors.
Probably need a little extra space.
Sounds like we'll leave this spot.
They may have five.
I have a question for the next Gen people, if that's permissible.
Sure.
When you say you did, by the way, the proposal is very generous and I commend it, but in terms of what the surveys, I mean, are you able to survey everyone in town? Or a representative sample, or was this an internal brainstorm?
As far as business owners?
Well, I mean, I mean-
There are also people who live in town.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm wondering, is it?
That is what we are here today to do, is to talk to council about our vendor, and then that's what the public hearing will be for, is for to talk to people. But how, we have been working with Becca and Russ, which is the initial step in the process of getting something going, and from what we understood. And so from that, it came, it went to the park board for their recommendation, and from that, it goes to council, is my understanding of the system.
No, I was asking a different question. When you were developing this, were your surveys in terms of identifying the project, was it internal or external, including, you know, people outside of?
Superior or Westmore.
Superior or business, or did it include citizens, is what I guess I'm asking?
When we think about what the community needs?
No, I think she's, I think she's asking that when you selected your project as the playground? Is that what you're trying to get at?
Oh, yes, the playground.
You know, you selected your project-
Yeah, when we decided to do a playground.
Yeah, she's asking- Did you consider other types?
Was it an internal selection, or was it an external, did you ask the community? I think that's more of a question.
It was something we identified as a group that we'd like to put around their stories.
And I will say, with that, I had met with council earlier in the year and talked about a 10-year plan of what I would like to see in the city, and an inclusive playground was on there.
Go ahead, sir.
Just a point of clarification, that the Eastside Park is accessible by the bicycles. They have the bicycle path going underneath Highway 59.
Palmetiere.
But if you're ever out there in the summer, you will see lots of people on bikes and on bike, on scooters and all sorts of them. That place is used by just having that pathway too. And if you're worried about accessibility, then I think you could dig another fountain.
Go ahead, Sid.
I'm going to go up here, because I care about the people on YouTube. I dropped my book, my notes, thank you. I just wanted to say, I'm Sid Bauer, I drive the transit in town. I would hope that a good chunk of the people in this room know that I care deeply about accessibility, and I also care deeply about playing, that's core of who I am. I was driving the bus today thinking about this, and I wanted to say, fantastic presentation. Wow, I want to go there, I want to bring the wheelchair user in my house to this park. We want to go play with that cow on the ground, this is beautiful. I also want to acknowledge the fact that there's a lot of people here, it was kind of this unsaid thing right now, right, that people are worried about the trees. So I'm going to say it out loud, people are worried about the trees, they're worried about the green space at this park. And I also wanted to mention and acknowledge that this is not a public hearing, but I might be in the bus when it's happening, that part of deep, true accessibility is taking time and taking space and taking a breath, which I will do now, to acknowledge that we can do things slowly and they can still be done really, really well, and they can be done beautifully. So acknowledging that maybe the best choice isn't to make a location decision in January, hoping that this crew can say, hmm, there's important feedback in this room, and we care about it, and we want to do this well, and maybe slowly as a way to do it better. And hopefully that the people on this side of the room maybe can say, hmm, we can take a deep breath, and we can acknowledge that there's goodness and wonderfulness, and we can share things in a helpful manner. And the last thing I was just curious about, but I assume Russ has brought it up, because he's a smart guy, is I was curious if Chizik or Eagles Ballpark had been considered as a place? Yeah, okay, I assumed that because you guys are thinkers. So I just wanted to say, wow, I want to play at the playground? Yes, we absolutely care about green space. Let's honor the time of the council and have a public hearing to discuss.
Yeah, and I really do encourage everybody to, that's sitting in this room, to attend the January 8th park board meeting, and that's really going to be your opportunity to have a conversation. And then, of course, we'll follow up with a public hearing, and then we'll address the site-location issues at that time. So what I'd really like to do in light of keeping order and moving things along, if you have site-related questions, kind of save those for the park board meeting, and then also the public hearing. If you have any other design-type questions or anything you're unclear about with regards to the Gen 2 people, that's the type of questions I'd like to field, go ahead, sir.
Can you explain the nature of the material you were talking about, pour-in-place, does it mean anything?
Can I say one more thing and then I'm going to leave? Because my CarHearts, I'm roasting myself alive, so sorry, crew, you all look very good and matching up here. I'm going to leave a piece of paper out there for anybody who has thoughts, who wants to respect the time of the council tonight, to put your email on, and then you can chat about it that way. I'm roasting alive in my CarHearts from my 10-hour bus shift, I'm headed outside.
Keep trucking.
Thank you, sir.
See you, Sid. Okay, sir, go ahead.
Can you explain what pour-in-place material is? I think you understand what that term means, but I-
Yeah, so pour-in-place, I think Mr. Torgerson could probably answer this better, but what I understand is it is similar to like a Nike tennis shoe, if that makes sense? That squishy part of your tennis shoe, that is similar to what a pour-in-place is. Was that your understanding of it?
That is how Tony described it, yes. Like, it's like the bottom of your shoe, the hard part is the bottom, the base, and then that squishy part is the top. So it's, it's a nice, hard material, but soft enough where if someone falls, it's not like cement.
Is it porous?
I don't know.
It's pervious, yeah. No, porous or impervious, is it? It's not impervious, water gets through.
Water goes through.
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about as far as the runoff, like environmentally, like the runoff when it rains, how is that absorbed into the earth and into the ground? Or is it, you know, like a parking lot, right? We have this new parking lot that's just going to hold water. So I'm just curious about, I was curious about that also as far as the pour-in-place, how that was affected as far as rain runoff and so forth.
We're 100% sure on that, we can definitely talk about that at the park board meeting, I think they have more-
We'll use the research.
But we have the gentleman here.
He's, yeah, maybe you can answer it, Mark, I know you're more operations, deal with quality control, but-
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm more equipment-focused, but the pour-in-place has a couple functions. One is depending upon what the fall height is, so if it's from 12 feet or 8 feet or 6 feet, you need more pour-in-place, because that's, again, it's a compliance thing for the children's safety. And then the surface itself is for kids with disabilities, right, to mobilize around the playground. So there's two main functions in that material. There's always going to have to put either wood chipmunks down and pour so deep, which gets spread very quickly, which is going to put a lot on the city to make sure that that material is always this thick, so kids fall. So the pour-in-place is just twofold, and it does very well in weather and those types of things to for children's.
Mary Elizabeth.
Kevin, is the council going to hear anyone who has concerns about this? Or is this merely an opportunity to ask further questions?
You maybe stepped in late, after the Gen 2 people are done. I do have time set aside for friends of Eastside Park to come up and have their moment, okay? That's coming, soon as we get done here. I do like that question, though, regarding the, you know, we, as you know, we have extreme weather events. You know, we get torrential downpours, runoff, impervious to that is, I guess I would have never thought of that. So that's a good question, something that may have to be addressed, because we certainly don't want a flooded park, right? We could somehow tile it, or I don't know if that's part of the design, Mark, maybe you could speak to that? Do they tile at all?
So there's a relationship between landscape structures and flagship. Flagship is the selling arm, they also do the installation part of this, so they're a rep organization. So they'll handle and work through all those questions.
Okay, gotcha.
Once you get into the design process, then that's when the work starts.
Sounds great. A couple more questions, I guess, we'll go with Joe back there first.
In terms of the structures, we get some really strong winds here. A few days ago, we had over 100 miles an hour, knocked down two trees in our yard. So my question is really in regards to the tallest structures. You know, how do we know they're going to stand up to the wind?
I think we can take this, from what we've learned so far, everything has a drawing, and everything has to meet code. And so every piece of that equipment has a required footing that needs to be done. And so when we've nailed down a design, they will mark each spot that a footing needs to be placed and how deep, and flagship is onsite doing the work, and they're guaranteeing that it is meant to meet the rating that is code, code structure.
And it's also designed and built in Minnesota, so they're very aware of the weather.
Go ahead, do you have a question back there? Carolyn?
Yeah, is there a plan for maintenance? And how, what's the lifespan of the pour-in-place? And, you know, if you're looking down the line, what?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a maintenance plan as part of this project?
Yes, so our group has padded into that $2 million, money set aside to continuously maintain the park. Every time you talk to a different manufacturer, they'll give you a different time span for that pour-in-place. Some will say 10 years, some will say 20. But what you can find on Google if you research it, if you are committed to resealing that pour-in-place every five-ish years, which is about a dollar a square foot, it'll expand the lifespan of that pour-in-place.
Charlie, I'm sorry.
We've just, we've had multiple conversations with Russ, who would be in charge of doing the maintenance on that. And he had really said about the pour-in-place versus a woodchip option, just for maintenance-wise on that.
Charlie.
Charlie Glass, this is a related question, and that is, from your perspective, what is the city's financial obligation now and going forward? I know that there's talk about the city somehow approving a vendor, and I don't, I'm trying to understand how that works unless the city's getting itself on a hook or something.
You can maybe speak to that, Becca.
So since we have, we'll be responsible for the insurance, maintenance, yes, they're going to help with some costs, but if there's any issues that come up, we will be on the hook for that, so they're coming to council asking for it in order, because we will be responsible in the future for all those costs.
What about liability, Becca, if somebody does get injured on the playground, is that ours then too?
If someone gets hurt on any city, on any city property, we send it to insurance, and the insurance adjuster will make that determination.
I mean, but I guess where I was going with that is, is it going to affect our rates? I mean, obviously, there's probably-
Since it's a bigger park, our rates will probably go up, just because we would have more-
Right, risk.
Equipment to-
More risk.
More equipment in case, so.
Yep.
If we have, if we have a big storm, you know, any, any tree within a certain radius from any shelter, those are covered by insurance, any equipment is covered by insurance. So if you have more equipment, you're going to have a little more insurance cost.
And back to the equipment, the city does purchase playground equipment for the different parks, and we've dealt with numerous different vendors. We've had good results with some, and we've had not-so-good with some. So that would be a very key point for the city, having a participation on the vendor that's chosen. If we've had good results with somebody, that we would like to continue working with those. If we've had negative results, probably to avoid them.
What I'd like to do, maybe I'll just entertain, I can entertain one more question or so, but, um, I do wanna hear the, I know our, our friends for Eastside Park have a presentation. If you don't have any, I mean, do you have a, a design, a question?
Um, the fencing around the park, I understand the, the, the safety aspect of that. But is there any way, like from the rendering there, the, uh, see there's a big rail of fencing here, you know, it's come down, the 7th Street there, if it's too much, it might like block off the park. They made it, y'all, to come and design it, make it thinner, so you can see through it better, to make it more see open, would be my concern.
Yeah, what is that fencing?
It's, it's similar to like a composite decking. It's kind of the same material, like a plastic wood is the best way to, to describe it.
The, the, there's a thick, thick black, you know, going through there, it may, may, you know, kind of black off. This is a view, a view coming down, so it's, you know.
I think that's very important.
It is.
Okay. Well, I, I really appreciate all the design type questions and please, uh, when you get into site location and I really again encourage everybody to attend the January 8th park board meeting with your location type questions. Write them down and please attend and then of course, uh, mark it on your calendar, the January 14th, uh, public hearing date. Um, at this time, I would like to invite, I think, believe Liz, you're coming up to talk. She's gonna represent the Friends of Eastside Park and we'll give them their time. Thank you. Let's have a round of applause for this gentle group. Thank you guys for that. Thanks for coming, you guys.
That was great. Thank you. Thanks for your hard work.
Let me know.
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys.
See you tomorrow.
Christmas Eve?
No.
Give me a whole background?
Me?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council members for allowing us to speak. My name is Liz Morrison and I'm here speaking tonight on behalf of the Friends of Eastside Park.
Can you speak up, Liz?
Sure. Uh, I'm here speaking tonight, uh, on behalf of the Friends of Eastside Park. We're an informal ad hoc group of local folks who really love our leafy green oasis at Eastside Park and would like to preserve it as it is. First though, let me say to the Next Gen folks, uh, that we really applaud your efforts, your ambition, your community spirit, your hard work. And we would welcome an inclusive destination playground such as you've laid out and in your wonderful vision. So to be clear, our goal is not to discourage this project. But we don't think Eastside Park is the right location for the largest playground in Minnesota. We see, uh, several issues with the current plan and the main one is location, of course. Uh, in the last couple of weeks, um, the Next Gen Committee has taken a, a closer look at the pros and cons of Eastside Park and Pombuter Park. And we really do appreciate you really looking into that, um, a little bit more closely. We, um, still feel though that we would like the council, together with the park board and Next Gen, to explore some additional alternative sites. A couple that have been mentioned to us are Green River Park, we spoke of that, uh, as well as the area north of Highway 28 across from Subway. Uh, there have been some other locations mentioned too. So, uh, we, we, we would like the council to continue to really work on this problem location. We, what we really wanna emphasize to you as our policymakers is that Eastside Park, as it is now, is a rare and beloved asset. This park is Morris's town square, it's a jewel that currently has the space for many small and medium sized events, gatherings, arts festivals, arts events, picnics, youth soccer games, outdoor church services, dance rehearsals, you name it, more and more. It's used every day by people of all ages and it offers a rare peaceful green spot to sit quietly, have lunch, listen to birds, enjoy nature. We feel that all of this would be greatly diminished if nearly half of the open green space and trees are consumed by a 23,000 square foot fenced art service playground and a large parking lot. It sounds like the parking lot has now been scaled back to about 25 cars from boarding. So, but still quite a large parking lot. Just a couple of examples, it, it appears to us that a majestic 80-year-old elm in the southwest corner of the park would probably be lost, as well as by our count, about 28 other trees. Beyond that, we wonder how many of the remaining mature trees east and south of the proposed playground could realistically be saved. What's more, could many of the remaining trees really coexist with the playground as their crowns grow? And they drop leaves and sticks that need to be removed from the, from the playground? The, um, renderings that you saw really do show an open, treeless area for this type of park. So in short, the destruction of this open shady green space would be a big loss to Morris and one that could not be replaced. We think it would be a mistake, therefore, to place this large playground in such a small park, which is surrounded by densely populated residential neighborhood. Bluntly stated, Eastside Park is just too small for a playground of this size. At just one square block, it is much smaller than the other parks around the state that contain these destination playgrounds. We have researched 39 destination playgrounds in Minnesota. The council has a list. Um, the smallest park that contains one of these big playgrounds is 11 acres. And as you'll see on the list, most are located in parks of more than 20 acres. Eastside Park, 2 acres. Further, none of the other destination playgrounds that we looked at is located in the center of a community as is proposed here. Eastside Park is directly surrounded by some 20 homes. It would suffer a big increase in traffic noise, extra lighting, and the loss of their current use of tree and grass. We don't think that the playground really needs to be within walking distance of the business district to meet the project's economic goals. None of the other 39 destination playgrounds we researched are located in the center of a town, yet they're apparently very popular. We believe a marketing plan could be created that would stimulate new economic activity by promoting both the playground, wherever it's located, along with our local businesses to out of town visitors. We, we heard some of the pros and cons out at Eastside or out at Pombuter Park. But we would, we would still like to see the council really take a careful look at Pombuter as a more logical place for a destination playground to see if it can be made to work. Uh, Pombuter has many advantages. Ample space, existing parking lots, bathrooms, shelters, campground, spray pad, outdoor games, a concession stand, bike trails, opportunities for kayaking and canoeing, and room to grow. We've heard talk of potential expansion of the playground for older children. So all these amenities would beautifully complement, uh, the wonderful inclusive playground that, uh, was laid out earlier. In addition, Pombuter already has some claim as a regional destination due to its popular campground. And this popularity could be built upon for Morris's new destination playground. Our group has also prepared some graphics which try to show roughly the effect of this proposal on the green space and trees and with your permission, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, by all means, go ahead.
The danger of the tree board will present the map. So we've passed out a handout, I think everybody has, and, um, I'm just going to explain the graphics. As you can see, um, well, first of all, I, I need to say that I am on the tree board, but I am not speaking for the tree board. The tree board did hear a presentation from the Next Gen Committee at our meeting last Wednesday and we discussed the implications of the proposal, but again, I am not speaking for the tree board. So, um, the first graphic in the handout shows the proposal as we understood it at the time we made the graphic, um, which is drawn to scale and with the limited information we had to date. So the parking lot at the, in the northwest corner was, um, is drawn for an intended 40 cars. So at one park board meeting, we heard 48 cars, at one 42 cars. So, um, this is drawn to support 40 cars. Um, so evidently it's been scaled back to 20 some cars. So I did wanna point out, so although it is shrunk, uh, in the north and south direction, in order to very efficiently, um, in a, in a compact way, cite that many cars, you need to have control strips so the cars don't drive out onto the parking or extend too far into the sidewalks. Nose to nose, if you, if you need them to efficiently park without, um, moving against each other, you need other strips. And it's also very close to the band shell and the beaches on the east. Um, a lot of, uh, parking lots and playgrounds incorporate trees and shrubs in order to visually soften a, a parking lot. It's not usual to just clock in the middle of a small park and make an asphalt rectangle. So if you were to incorporate some trees and shrubs, as is often done in park settings, it would take up an even greater area. But, um, so this is again based on what we heard at the park board meeting, but evidently it has been shrunk. Also on the graphic, the playground area is drawn to scale at 23,500 square feet, although we understand wouldn't be a strict rectangle. But as you can see and as Liz said, about half the park would be taken up by this new development, maybe a little under half. At the tree board meeting, when we were talking with the committee about the fact that the destination playground would be used by a very limited age group, in other words, younger kids, maybe ending at, I don't know, eight, 10 years old, 10, whatever. One of the committee members said that there would be a possible expansion to add something for older kids. Um, and she called it, for example, a ninja fitness course would be one example. And then also, as we've heard, phase two of the Next Gen proposal envisions replacing the picnic shelter with a building. These types of expansions would likely take up even more of Eastside Park and its trees than, um, we've seen today. And therefore, as Liz stated, it's just another reason why a site like Pombuter Park is much more logical. You've got space to expand, room to grow. The second graphic, um, which is on the back of, very back of the handout, um, shows the approximate location of the park's existing trees and the approximate spread of their current crowns. And we also don't have recorded all the species, although it's not on this handout. Um, Eastside Park is the only park of its kind in Morris in terms of location and this tree composition. There's a plaque actually that the city has installed in the south part of Eastside Park that explains its massive old growth trees, extremely rare old trees. Um, it also has a new generation of trees in a diversity of species that are intended as part of management of this park to create a canopy that will eventually compensate for the loss of big elm trees and ash trees when they eventually die. So in part, what is being removed is that whole next generation that is growing now. Um, we counted roughly 28 trees would be removed based on the, uh, footprints as we knew them then. Um, and that would be, would include, as, um, Liz said and as Russ has confirmed, a stately elm in the southwest corner of the park. Many of the trees to be removed were planted by or donated by, uh, community members, including just three years ago when Kiwanis made a $10,000 donation of eight large trees that were placed west and southwest of the band shell. Um, it's also important to note that the area taping up by the parking lot and playground would be permanently treeless. Um, at the park board meeting, the Next Gen Committee suggested incorporating trees into the playground design and, um, Jeff mentioned this today too. But we question whether this is really feasible. I studied aerial photos and ground photos of all 39 of the destination playgrounds that we could find in Minnesota, um, and I worked many, many weeks on this actually. Um, and most have no trees in them at all or around them. Some have trees along an edge, um, nearby. A few have trees incorporated into the design and most of those are short developmental species. And I think one reason may be that the rubber floor manufacturers recommend that to achieve longevity longer than 10 to 12 years is what I, um, read. That these floors need to be regularly sprayed off with water or blown off with a leaf blower to keep them clear of sticks, leaves, and other debris that can be ground into and abrade the rubber because that's what, um, eventually causes the deterioration and the need to refinish the floor. Um, as an aside, it seems to us that clearing these leaves and sticks, which is gonna have to happen every spring, every fall after the storms, is gonna be made more difficult by the enclosed fencing. And this may be a reason by, um, why, when I researched these playgrounds, I found very few that were entirely surrounded by fencing, very few. Um, as Liz, as Liz mentioned, at Eastside Park, the trees that would remain south and east of the playground will continue to grow. They're growing now, they're gonna continue to grow. Their crowns are gonna overhang the playground and the trees are going to drop as they do sticks, sap, and leaves. We remember, many of us remember in March 2017, when the city removed the huge trees in the playground, in and near the playground at Genstead Park. And the reason given to the tree board for this removal of these massive trees, which is heartbreaking, was because they were dropping sticks on the playground equipment. So the Friends of Eastside Park are worried that the first time one of the new plastic playground pieces is bent or damaged from a stick dropping from 40 feet from the ground or blowing in storm, that there will be pressure to severely remove or trim the trees that are standing nearby. So in short, although it's a laudable goal, we feel that significant tree canopy and this type of playground just aren't compatible in close quarters. And that's, I think, what we're seeing in the other communities that have built these as well. Um, somebody, uh, the committee mentioned the trees at Pombuter Park. The trees that would be removed there are not at all of the same quality as those at Eastside Park. They're primarily ash and other lower quality trees. I know them well, um, we've worked on them as a tree board also. It's just not a comparison, um, as far as trees, even though they're already be removed, the loss to, it just is not comparable. Um, the Friends of Eastside Park urged that this project is slowed down. It's a huge undertaking. It will have a major impact on the community. It will permanently change the character of Morris if it's placed in the middle. Um, if Eastside, if, if, if additional funds are needed to do the project right and put it somewhere else more appropriately cited, then we feel we should take the additional time. Maybe some cost savings will be found. Jay Fears, and here, he was the city, uh, engineering inspector for many, many years. He feels that the feasibility of putting it at Pombuter Park is. He feels that the feasibility of putting it at Pomdutere Park is, it's very rational. It's not going to be a significant additional cost to, for example, do a new septic system. It would be wonderful to have him here and be able to put his input in. We feel we should just slow down, raise the money to site it correctly. And I could answer any questions anybody had, or you could all go home, which I'm sure we'd like to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
The, I've seen the Destination Playgrounds, there's thirty-nine of them, but it seems that maybe Alexandria would probably be the smallest populous out of all thirty-nine? And what is Alec? Forty thousand? What is it?
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand is Alec? So all these other towns, and relative to their sites being a lot bigger, would be their population is a lot bigger and their city is a lot bigger, so.
Yep.
I mean, with respect to Morris being five thousand.
Yeah, the point on that list that we were trying to make is the smallest cities that own a Destination Playground as opposed to a county owning it are homieji at fourteen thousand five hundred.
Rough, I'll go with roughly five thousand. There you go. I'll go with roughly.
Anyway, we were trying to make the point that the smallest city that owns one is fourteen thousand five hundred. In other words, that would be the capacity to potentially do the long-term improvements.
Mary Elizabeth.
Sorry to interrupt.
I was supposed to say something, but I didn't know Sue was done.
I'm done.
You're done. Okay, well, go ahead.
I'm coming to the mic.
That would be nice.
Would it? If I'm not home in fifteen minutes, Ronnie's going to be really annoyed because the Green Day package are playing.
Here, still here in fifteen minutes, there's something wrong.
All right.
You have two minutes. You used to do that to me, you know? Okay.
See if it worked. My name's Mary Elizabeth Bazanson. I have lived across the street from East Side Park for thirty-five years. It turns out, I was kind of stunned by this, that I have lived across the street from East Side Park longer than many of the Next Gen people might have been alive. I think I might have to rethink some of my behaviors. Let me begin by saying that I am a teacher or was a university professor, and I taught public speaking. And this presentation was beautiful. It was truly beautiful. Rhetorically, you got an A. I mean, I was like, wow, look at that! And even had little graphic, Harlem and the shotgun wedding. All right, we'll move on. Everyone in this room wants this park. We want this park for kids. Every single person in this room. That is the place we are together. Where we are not together is where it is going to be. And I share the concerns with some others that the space of East Side is too small. I know that Becca and Russ were so excited when they drove by East Side and thought, my God, it's not flooded. And we can take out some trees, who would notice? Really? East Side Park was put there because the land it is on used to be a slew. There are people who used to live around the park who would be goose hunting in a boat, which is why my basement has water in it. We want it, we just can't have it. It's very frustrating. I will tell you that East Side Park is well-used, and I know that you might be surprised by this, but two things. One, I am not in favor of putting a building so that, so that, I don't know what people would do. What we've heard is a wedding in the winter. The point of having the picnic open is that people can come anytime they want and have lunch with other people. And then they walk over and they go to what was a place to play and is now a parking lot. So I am not in favor of that. If we're going to invest money, then put it in the band shell to make the bathrooms not look like they're in a prison and to make them accessible. We do not need to have bathrooms, another set of bathrooms, even though it might be cheaper someplace else. The other thing I will say to you, because all of my points were covered, so, so much for spending all these nights working on this, which is what my students would say, but vandalism. The fence that will go around this is made out of pickets, not pointy pickets, because then people could be injured. But it will be well, it will be well-publicized as a two million dollar event. And all you need is one young man, oh, pardon me, that was sexist. One young person to come along and kick through that fence. And the fence will be destroyed. One person. Although, you know, in the development of groups, it could be more than one. The other thing you might consider, the band shell is lit at night, okay? People were found having sex inside the band shell. Really?
Well, come on, let's get more to the point here.
No, you know what? That's my other point, is that you seem to have all decided, if you've all decided, we could have gone home. My point is that there will be, I'm afraid, vandalism in this park that will harm these things, and I don't know how much money we have to replace and fix them. So Mr. Solby, since I assume you've already decided, why did you invite us?
I haven't decided. I just thought you should probably not get into that conversation about what's happening at the park. You gave your explanation about some of that, it just was not appropriate, it wasn't appropriate to say that.
Fine.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we have real concerns about the safety of the park and the way the park is being used.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's citizens' comments, may I?
No, it's not.
Doesn't it say?
Well, we're still in that phase, but I guess in light of, unless anybody's got something new to say?
Hey, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
If I don't do this in three minutes, let me know.
So Ken Hodgson is here, he and I were in the Kiwanis, and I don't know if anyone else was, and yeah, Sue Dieter. In the Kiwanis Club, we're defunct now, and our last act was to give the rest of our money for those trees. You know, they won't be here forever, I get it. But my point isn't this. Speaking of rhetoric, there's something in the nature of a fallacy that's going on here, and I just want us to identify it. We have a group of people who have a wonderful idea that everyone in the world agrees with. Let's do this, it'll be great. Fine, that's number one. And they'll raise the money. Number two, we, the group, have decided there are only two places that we could do it, and the one costs twice as much and we can't afford it. Therefore, you got to do it in the city park. Well, I get it, but the fallacy is you don't got to do it at all. I hope you do. I hope you put it somewhere. I think there are a lot more than two possible places. But we're now talking about the city taking action to approve vendors and, you know, this train is leaving the station on what I think is a fallacy that the only place it can be done is East Side Park, and doesn't everyone want to do it? Thanks.
Thank you, Charlie. The way I understand the Phase One and the Gen Two's group's point with regards of vendor selection at this point, the vendor selection, once we make that determination, and that will, they will become involved, Mark can probably speak to this, they will assist in that process of site selection. And maybe, Mark, if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so I, the site selection piece, yeah, from a, so again, it'll get turned over to Flagship. We will assist absolutely from a design standpoint. We're going to carry out the vision of what is Morris's one, what's the community one do. But we're, we're going to support that from, but we're not, we're not picking location in the end of the day, but we are going to support
Right.
the technical aspects and what does that look and feel like, for sure, to the best of our ability, we will help that.
And that's why it was important to try to get the vendor selection process started, so we can just help in that regard. To answer your question, Charlie, that's kind of what the goal is.
I am just curious, several people have mentioned if there was a possibility to slow things down. This is two days before Christmas that we're here today. And January eighth and January fourteenth are coming very quickly for some of us who haven't been able to attend a meeting about this. So is there any way to slow it down?
Well, I think that's something we as a council will need to decide, you know? Once we feel comfortable making a decision as a group, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but, you know, I think we're all pretty smart people here. We're elected officials, and we realize that we represent you, after all. You elected us, you put us in these seats. So yeah, we're going to be mindful and respectful of that. So, and I think I could probably speak for us, the council, on that. So yeah, one last question.
I just want to say, first of all, that you see a lot of people with white hair and so on here, and you may think that we're just not, we don't know what the community needs. But keep in mind that we all have, many of us have grandchildren, and, you know, we want them to have a nice, we want them to have this stuff too. My, but the point of clarification I need is what is Flagship? You've mentioned Flagship, I don't understand.
Yeah, so they're an independent rep, so we have probably thirty-five rep organizations that sell our product on the road. And that's a Minnesota representative, so they're the selling arm of landscaping structures. And we're the manufacturer of that.
Yeah, Farrell and I kind of, I can ditto your sentiments. You know, as I was looking and listening to the presentation, I'm sixty-six-year-old. I'm sixty-six years old and I have a heart condition. But boy, wouldn't that be fun to walk through that playground equipment, that's what I was thinking. But I too have grandchildren, and I think most of us, to her point, do. So yeah, very exciting stuff, and I just want to put everybody at ease. We're going to make sure that we do this right. Like, I think I can honestly say that to everybody in this room. So, once again, thanks for both groups, the Gen Two, Friends of East Side Park. Let's just, as a community, put our heads together and make this thing work for everybody, so, thank you. If you would like, you're free to go. At this point, you don't want to hang around and listen to the rest, you sure can. But at this point, I guess I'd just like to close the citizens' comments portion of the meeting. Thank you all for coming in. Yeah, go ahead, come on up. Maybe you would. Come on up here. Let me know what you're thinking. I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, what's your name? Oh yeah, you just got on the park board not too long ago, did you? Okay, well, welcome. Thank you for your survey. So you have comments about the selection of the vendor? LSI, okay, great. I'm glad. I'm glad you shared that with me, and I think we're kind of all on that same page. Thank you for coming in. Nice meeting you two, by the way. Okay. Yeah, that was, that was very good. Thank you all for your input and your questions. We shall move on to bringing an approval of our regular meeting minutes from December tenth.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes on December tenth.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve our December tenth regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we have the condensed version of the December tenth minutes for the paper.
I will move approval of the December tenth condensed minutes.
One second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the condensed version of those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on, next up is our consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, our gambling reports, the November thirteenth Morris Public Library Board Minutes, the November twentieth City of Morris Tree Board Minutes, the November thirteenth City of Morris Park Board Meeting Minutes, and the December eleventh, twenty-twenty-four City of Morris Park Board Meeting Minutes. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. I will bring it back to the council for discussion on any of those items on the consent agenda. Thanks for coming in, you guys. Any discussion from the council?
My only question is line twenty-four.
Yeah.
What was done out at Green River? It says trenching and wiring, Pomdutere and Green River. Was that for the electrical that was done out there? Okay, for the campground? Because it's Pomdutere. Pickleball lights?
The pickleball lights, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Playing late-night games?
All right, thank you. Any other discussion from the members of the council? Hearing none. We've already got a motion and a second to approve. I'll just ask for a voice vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next before us, under petitions, requests, and communications, we have the City of Morris Park Board is recommending a vendor for Phase One of the Inclusive Park Plan. I guess before we, well, we can entertain a motion in a second, and then we can have a brief discussion before we put it to a vote.
I will make the motion recommending that we accept LSI as the vendor of choice for the park project.
I would second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a, first and a second to approve LSI as the recommended vendor of choice for Phase One of the Inclusive Park Plan. I'll bring it back to the council. Any final discussions, comments? I guess I can say, Mark Butchy, it's be fun working with you. It's nice to have somebody that's got some roots and got connections and ties to Morris. It's pretty exciting. Who would have thought, you know, years ago, moved the needle ahead, twenty, thirty years, we'd be sitting here having this conversation?
Yeah.
Certainly not me, Butchy.
I'm not, I am.
Dory doesn't think so either.
Just to add, yeah, thanks for coming out tonight, and it sounds like talking with the park board that you're willing to come out and help work and do some extra activities to help us with this decision, hopefully, if we are able to make it move forward, so just thank you again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion from members of the council before we put it to a vote? Hearing none. I'll ask for roll call vote on that, please, Carolina.
Councilman Miller Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Collison? Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Congratulations, Butchy. We're going to put you to work.
All right, super, sounds good, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions.
Yeah, it is okay if it's past your stuff, you can leave.
Yeah, you guys can go. Thank you very much, you guys, for coming in.
We don't, you don't need to sit through the
You're excused.
Unless you really care about our tax levying.
Yeah, thanks, you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, we'll see you around, yeah. Merry Christmas.
Good to see you again.
Okay. We'll move on now to our ordinances and resolutions, phase of the meeting. Our first resolution before us is a resolution approving a consulting agreement with Madden, Gallanter, Hanson, P L L C Attorneys at Law. And I will let our city manager speak to that.
Yeah, so we use them, um, for any employment, um, issue. We've used them for litigation items and then labor negotiations. I can't see anything in the future, we approved the next contracts, um, we should have our contracts for three years. So unless there's a litigation, but it is helpful to have someone on, um, retainer, just to have, um, since, uh, usually city attorneys, um, aren't well-versed in employment law. So it's nice to have somebody who just does that.
I will move approval of the resolution approving a consulting agreement with Madden, Gallanter, Hanson, P L L C Attorneys at Law, as needed.
I will second.
All right, thank you, we have a motion and a second. Uh, if there's no further discussion, I would like to ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Corrells?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gallickson? Mayor Waller?
Yes. Next resolution before us is a resolution approving the final twenty twenty-four tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-five. Uh, once again, I'll let Becca speak to that.
Yeah, so, um, moving from our preliminary levy of about a seven point one down to a five point four increase, um, the total levy of one million eight hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. We have our general fund, library fund, um, thirteen A general obligation, um, improvement bond, twenty sixteen tax abatement, twenty seventeen A, um, G O bond, twenty twenty G O refunding bond, and a twenty twenty-two G O improvement bond. All included in that amount.
I will move approval of the final twenty twenty-four tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-five.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. There's no other further discussion, I, obviously, this is probably a higher levy than we, than we're used to, but I think we all know the world we're living in. You know, we've always, we've always teetered around a three, three and a half percent levy, but you know, given we're a couple of points higher than that, with expenses the way they are, I guess it uh, kind of all makes sense. All right, we have, uh, a motion and a second, I'll ask for roll call vote on that, please, Carolina.
Councilmember Corrells?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gallickson? Mayor Waller?
Yes. Uh, the next resolution before us is a resolution adopting the final twenty twenty-five budget for the City of Morris. And once again, Becca, you can just maybe speak to it.
Yeah, so the general fund budget, um, is an increase of four point four percent, um, going up to a little over, um, five million. And then our total, uh, budgets for all our funds is totaling fourteen million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, six seventy-three. So, um, if you go to the budget summary, um, you'll see that most, um, most are going up a little bit, so your capital improvement, um, is up about a seven percent. Um, that, that, those are dollars that come in, um, from the lodging tax, but, um,
State aid?
Yes, thank you, the state aid dollars. Then we have our capital outlays, so that is down a little bit, um, most of that is due to the dollars, um, in and out of transit, um, the grant dollars from there. Uh, library fund, um, is up about nine percent. Will have, um, a deficit this year, we're going to take those dollars out of, um, out of their, uh, reserves. Uh, your bond funds, um, are kind of all in there, um, those, all, you know, those that look like they're a deficit, they do have dollars in the fund to support them. Then you have your water sewer, um, garbage, uh, those are up, but not terribly up, those went up with our, um, increase in our revenues and then our expenses in there. The liquor store, we're looking at a two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar, um, profit, um, projected amount. And then your central garage is up about five percent. So, um, just a little differences in there. So if you have any questions on those, we I can answer, we kind of went over a lot of the general fund stuff and that, some of those differences in our truth and taxation meeting, um, last meeting, so unless anyone has any questions.
This is a bonding year, right, I believe?
For the state? Um, it was, no, the bonding bill was supposed to be last year, um, they were, they're going to hope to do one this year, since they didn't pass one last year, it's a budget year this year.
Budget, yeah.
So, hopefully, things will get done.
Any questions of the council for the city manager?
Well, you had just stated the operating budget was going up over five million. Just to clarify that it's going up to over five million, not, it's not increasing by five million.
I'm sorry, correct.
Just for people that-
Yes, if it's, yes.
Saying, what?
It went from about four point eight million to-
Five.
Five.
Point, yeah.
Yeah.
Just-
Yes, sorry.
Oh no, I, I was with you, I just, if somebody listening in-
I guess I will move approval of the resolution adopting the final twenty twenty-five budget for the City of Morris.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on that resolution, uh, adopting the twenty twenty-five budget for the City of Morris. Uh, well, once again, we'll have roll call vote on that, please, Carolina.
Councilmember Solby?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Gallickson? Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, moving right along, we have, uh, resolution approving a non-union employee policy for the period of twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. And once again, I'll bring it back to Becca, she can-
Yeah, so most all these are going to be, um, similar, uh, cause we try and keep them as, um, consistent with each other as we can. Um, so the non-union, um, we did, um, approve, or you guys approved at one of the uh, earlier meetings, the step and grade scale, so that is at the back of the, um, the contract or policy, um, along with where everyone's grade and step are, starting in, um, January of twenty twenty-five. With that, um, we're following the wages set forth in the labor contract, so looking at a three and a half percent for twenty twenty-five, three point two five for twenty-six, and three point two five for twenty-seven. Um, that will, um, after, so there'll be no step increase twenty twenty-five. Those who earn a step increase, um, after that will get them in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and so on. Contract language added is in regards to paid family medical leave and extended sick leave. So, starting next year, um, we're going to need to be, uh, putting into the paid family medical leave. So, uh, what we have, um, negotiated with the unions are a fifty-fifty split, so we pay fifty percent and as, and then employees have to pay fifty percent. And then, along with that, um, if it goes above a one percent increase, they're, they're thinking it's going to be a point nine is what they're projecting, but if, if the state goes higher on what we have to put in, um, we've agreed to doing a meet and confer if premiums go above one percent with, within, um, the unions.
So they're, they're actually going to start in the twenty-six by actually making you pay, I, I thought that was, the, the original plan was there was money set aside in the state budget. But obviously, they've decided that you have to start paying right away, huh?
I, I'd have to connect with Susan, but I thought we had to start paying in twenty-six.
But is that when the pro, does the program start now in twenty-five? And then-
I thought it started in twenty-six.
Maybe it only starts in twenty-six?
I think it starts in twenty-six.
Right. I think there, I mean, initially when it was set up, they were talking that there was initial investment by the state into the fund.
I can check on when we have to start putting in, at any point though, that's what we're going to have to-
Yeah, cause I, I remember them saying the initial was like a point seven or something, so that's obviously got a number over two. Yeah, that's, that's basically what-
Projected has gone up.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion approving a non-union employee policy for the period of twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, uh, on that resolution approving a non-union employee policy for the period twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven. And again, we'll have roll call vote on that, please, Carolina.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Gallickson? Corrells?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay. Next before us, another resolution, this one's approving, uh, a labor contract with APSME, Union Local Twenty Twenty-Two Public Works Union, Unit for Period Twenty Twenty-Five through Twenty Twenty-Six. And again, Becca, go ahead, take the floor.
Yeah, so this is basically the same type of language, uh, the three-year contract, the three, three and a half, three point two five, and three point two five. Um, they did agree to, um, if you remember, they had a three-step scale in the public works, they are going to go to the eight-step scale. So you'll see that in the back of theirs, eight-step scale. There's, and then, um, again, no step increase in twenty-five. They had additional language for the, um, split for the family and medical, paid family medical, um, and they did, since they are, um, CDL drivers, if you look at thirteen point seven, it does have an extra clause in there, um, cause they are not allowed to use sick and safe time to, um, leave under the, the provisions, uh, that we are basically required to let people off for. Um, so closures due to weather or other per, public emergency, um, they're not allowed to do that, we did add in there, except in an event of extenuating circumstances, just in case. Um, there is some that would need to take it for, for an emergency with family, um, on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Any questions?
I will move approval of the resolution approving the labor contract with the APSME Union Local Twenty Twenty-Two Public Works Unit for a period of twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second. All right, uh, once again, I'll ask for, uh, roll call vote on that resolution, please, Carolina.
Councilmember Gallickson? Miller?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay. Resolution approving, next before us is a resolution approving a, a labor contract with APSME, uh, Union Local Twenty Twenty-Two General Unit for the period twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. And Becca, if you want to speak and maybe differentiate a little bit between the two?
Um, really, nothing is, is very different, the only thing that wasn't added in there, that was in the public works, was that, um, CDL clause, for the safe and sick time. Um, otherwise, they are, they also approved the eight-step scale, uh, step and grade table, um, again, no step movement in twenty twenty-five, um, and the three and a half, three point two five, and three point two five.
I think that's really going to make our, everything really clean, having that step scale. Glad we took one down that path.
Yeah.
Good deal for us. I guess I can move, uh, on that resolution approving a labor contract with APSME Union Local Twenty Twenty-Two General Unit for the period twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. And once again, Carolina, I'll ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Corrells?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gallickson? Mayor Waller?
Yes. Last but not least, we have a resolution authorizing advertising, a request for, for proposals for engineering services. And I'll, uh, turn it over to Becca, she can speak to that, please.
So each December, um, you review a contract with Woodseth for engineering services, so I'm requesting that we um, send out a request for proposals for, um, other, to other engineering firms. Um, we look at sending them out, um, by this Friday, and then closing date would be January seventeenth. So it gives them four weeks to get it back in. So, just some kind of discussion items, uh, like we've talked before over the last seventeen months that I've been here and worked with Woodseth. Um, I've noticed a few things that I haven't when working with other firms. Um, felt their communication wasn't, uh, there, had talks with Jeff numerous times of, um, having, having conversations, at one point, um, he was going to do a check-in once a week, um, that didn't happen. Um, I did feel like certain things that other firms didn't charge for, we were getting charged for. And then I, also, I didn't feel they were doing a very good job at finding funds for utility projects, with the excuse of, well, your water rates are too low. Um, so the last project that he brought to me, um, and wanted to bring forward to, to the council, the special assessments were over eighteen thousand dollars per household. Um, which I told him the first time we looked at it, that I felt it was too high, asked if we could look at PFA funding, um, how to get on the list, how to do things. When I brought up looking, bringing to you a request for proposals for, um, a new engineer, it was, well, I thought you were just gonna do your rate study and then we'd have some discussion on the PFA funding. So I feel like they're not very proactive at trying to get us other funds to help our citizens as we go through a lot of these water projects. So, I am requesting, um, to send these proposals out. Send them out to a few engineering firms, um, that we would, um, work with, some around the area, some, um, that have asked us before, have come into the office and asked for, for us to look at them if we ever go out for engineering services, um, and then bring them back, and I know we had talked before about having, you know, a couple of you guys want to be on the interviewing committee, um, we certainly can do that, it'll be Russ, Ryan, and myself. So.
In this, well, Woodseth, Woodseth, will they be part of it too? Will they be part of it, or are they totally being excluded by this?
I can send it to them, I, I told Jeff that I, I would possibly be inter, you know, be interested in trying to work with a different engineer in their firm, but I also feel that like dollar-wise, it doesn't make sense to still go with them if we're not getting the biggest bang for our buck. So, personality-wise, could we work better with somebody from, from their firm, possibly? Um, but then it comes down to the money part of it. Is that person that we're going to work with, or are they better equipped to go out and look for, for dollars? Or is their whole firm, that's how they do things? You know, so it's, I don't know.
I mean, I understand, I just, I wanted, I just wanted clarification, you know, if you're requesting services, are they still part of the bidding process?
I would think that they should be offered to put a bid, and we have the right to refuse or to look elsewhere, I mean, who knows, but it doesn't, it doesn't hurt at all to test the waters and see what we find out there and just making sure, like you say, we're getting the bang for our buck.
Well, and I think too, in fairness to Woodseth, we've had a relationship with them for quite some time, and I, I don't, I don't think it'd be very appropriate to not include them, but, um, you know, you're the person that works directly with more than the rest of us do, so, you know.
Well, I mean, I think if that's offered, then we're, you know, if they're offered it too, uh, if you're making the point that there's certain things that are, they're charging for that other people aren't, that, that can be weighed out in the decision that you make. And whatever proposal they bring back to you, it's like, okay, well, this firm doesn't charge for that, they do, okay?
Right.
You know, but I, I think just to leave them totally out, I, I, I don't really like that, I think they should be offered a choice. And then, what we're doing is- And then what we're doing is, we're going out and we're bidding it out with other people to say, hey, you know, you gotta get in order. Plus, there's a deal where, you know, you have to wanna work with them, you know? You've had a little tough time, but, and maybe their decision isn't to go with them in the end, but I think we should still send out a proposal to them.
Well, in the spirit of being fiscally responsible, I think we're doing the right thing by...
Absolutely.
You know, we owe it to our taxpayers to check elsewhere and weigh the pros and cons and go from there. Good discussion. Anything else for the city council on that issue? Or for the city manager, I'm sorry?
Do we have a motion on that yet?
Nope, nope. I'm waiting for a tendered motion.
A resolution authorizing advertising a request for proposals for engineering services to include WSN and assorted others as we see fit.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Authorizing, not resolution, authorizing advertising a request for proposals for engineering services. And we'll ask a roll call vote on that, please, Carolina.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Gallickson? Mayor Waller?
Yes. Wow, we finally got there. The city managers were better. Take it away, Becca.
All right, so the tree board met on December 18th. As you heard, they heard plans on the playground. And they also discussed the tree giveaway, which we've kinda talked about before. So to help encourage planting on private property and to help prepare Morris Tree Canopy for the eventual arrival of Emerald Ashbore, the city would give away 100 bare root trees in several varieties, both short and tall species. So the trees must be planted on private property within the city. Each recipient would be given a tree, a bag of mulch, a trunk guard, detailed instructions for planning and aftercare. Volunteers would be on hand the day of pickup to explain proper planting.